The October 6, 2021 Committee of the Hole Meeting. I would ask you to stand for a moment of silence and followed by the pledge to the flag.
My pledge to allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Ready? Good. All right. Moving down to number five, we have subcommittee reports. Anything for infrastructure, Councilor Lebedinsky?
It's in your packet.
Okay. Economic development. Peggy's not here.
No.
Sorry.
She provided a report at the joint.
At the joint. Got that. Transportation?
Actually, I'm not on the committee.
Oh, you're not? Is that you?
Yeah, they didn't have a quorum.
No quorum. All right. Ordnance review, Councilor Proskel.
We will be meeting this month.
Okay. Efficient methods, Councilor Lebedinsky.
We're just moving forward with our lean Six Sigma and white belt trading.
Great.
That's about it.
Okay. Emergency services, Chief Hand provided his report. Human relations commission, Ms. Levin Good.
Good evening, councilors, Council President, Madam Mayor. National Hispanic Heritage Month continues until October the 15th. Also, October is recognized as Italian-American Heritage and Culture Month, National Domestic Violence Awareness Month, National Disability Employment Month, National Bullying Prevention Month, and also LGBTQ History Month. The commission meeting was not held last night due to no quorum, and the commission's next meeting will be held on Tuesday, November 2, at 6:00 p.m. in council chambers, and all are welcome to attend.
Okay. Thank you. Land Bank, Ms. Penrod or anyone?
I'm not here, but I can take a stab at the meeting.
All right. Come up to the mic. Thank you.
She's going to try to be here. Wow. I'm J.D. Sanchez, a part of the Land Bank Board. We have been meeting with each other for the past three months, and we are getting together with Justin and Peggy and our advisors on proper documentation, so we are proceeding as we should be.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
Hopefully she'll be here.
Thank you. Library, do we have Ms. Hilton?
Yes, we do.
Hello.
Hello. Good evening. Thank you. I have four items I'd like to discuss. One of them was good news. The Friends of the Library had their indoor/outdoor book sale, and we raised $787 for the library. Our next sale will be in November with Christmas items. The computer upgrade district system-wide was successfully completed in September. There were a few glitches, as was to be expected, but Pottstown really came out very well. We can be proud of how well we did. We managed to iron out all the wrinkles. And especially, I want to thank Mindy Lipsky, our acting executive director, because Holly was on vacation at that time, and Nicole Forrest, our acting IT staff person, because Stacy was having surgery on her knee at that time. And even so, we did really well. You can be proud. Good job, hard job, but well done. Another piece of good news, our library board member Peggy Whitaker has again pledged a $10,000 gift when a matching $10,000 is raised during the month of November. She did this for us last year, and it worked really well, and it was a nice infusion of $20,000 at the end of the year when things are tight. So she's doing it again, and we're very happy with that. And we are asking the borough to help us out with something. At our September meeting, we voted to contact the borough to help the library change the parking lot and make it safer for patrons. Judge Yon, who has rejoined board, remembers talking about it years ago, and he couldn't believe we were still talking about it. So we resolved to solve this problem. Here's the problem. Traffic comes through our parking lot, and they're not.
I'm going to assume I can't reach Councilor Kirkland about the Ricketts Center. Guess not.
I have one from Ryan.
Okay. How about the Pottstown School District, Councilor Lindsay? Anything?
Yes, I do have something. Hold on, give me a second. I gotta get my.
Need it?
Yep. I'm here. I'm going to teach this math, sorry. Okay. So there was Pottstown School, Pottstown Class of 1958 had their 60th reunion. Sixty years, Pottstown. Congratulations to Superintendent Stephen Rodriguez, as he was recognized for Hispanic Heritage Month. He also did a meeting with the parents with FAC, Family Advisory Committee. And I'm going to give you some little point, some little things that he spoke about. He spoke that the staff, majority of the staff is vaccinated, or they have to get a test every two, twice a week. Yes. Kids are now.
This conference will now be recorded.
Should be good.
Okay. Okay. Sorry, guys, we had a technical difficulties. Right now, we are at me talking about Pottstown School District, okay? I'm just trying to keep you up. So now the kids are five feet apart where possible. There are fans in the cafeteria, limited movement in hallways. They're still doing the cleaning, hand washing, et cetera. It's still in place. Constant work, they constantly working with the public health and experts and officials, and an extra, please be kind to the nurse. You know, they're trying to follow the rules and protocols for COVID-19, so I hear there's some going on with the nurse. So if you could be kind to the nurse, she's just doing her job, you or she. I think that's it. Hold on. Sorry. I had to take screenshots. If you can, parents, try not to send your kids to school sick, and be mindful that the school is waiting for their PCR test results, so sometimes it'll be a little delay. And remember that we are all one team, one goal, one team, one town.
Thank you. Okay. Ms. Hilton, on?
Just logged off.
Still tuning in?
She just left.
Just left. Okay. In that case, I will go back one to the Ricketts Center. Councilor Kirkland, anything to report?
Can you hear me?
Al.
Yes?
Yes.
Just want to reiterate some after-school programs going on. The ballet dance, tap dance, hip-hop dance, there's karate classes, and of course, there's help with homework. Those after-school programs are going on presently. Of course, there's also the Health and Wellness Department, run by the Director of that department, which is Paul Wunderbottom, he's a very good trainer. I believe their Health and Wellness membership was allowed you access to the gym and all the equipment. I believe it's like $15, $20 for like four months. It's really good. It's really good membership. You get a lot with that. You get all the free weights, the weight machines, the treadmills, the personal training with Paul. I'd say he's very good. So that's available. And keep in mind that, you know, the Ricketts is a borough-wide facility. It's not only for the area. It's a borough-wide facility available for everyone in the whole entire borough. So keep that in mind. If you want to get in shape, or you feel that you have to, you know, get in shape for health reasons, call the facility, talk to Paul Wunderbottom. He has a very good facility, weight training program, personal instruction. They're also, they do shower for the homeless at the Ricketts. That's on Tuesdays and Thursdays. October 29, they'll be have something called a trunk for treats. They did this a couple of years ago. I was involved with that. It was very fun. It's a situation where for the Halloween, you know, you come with your treats, you pull your car in with the trunk facing the parking lot, you open your trunk, and you sit there, and the kids go around to the cars and, you know, with their Halloween costumes, and they go around to all the cars and they get the treats. It's very fun. It's a very fun situation. You know, like I said, I did that a couple of years ago. It was very fun, because sometimes, you know, a couple of kids try to go through it twice, and sometimes you say like, you know, hey, unless there's two Darth Vaders, I think I've seen you before, you know? So it was very fun. It was very fun. So, yeah, I suggest that people get involved with that. You know, it's very nice and a situation for the kids to get safe candy. Also, during that event, there'll be a station where they'll be handing out free coats, and now sponsored, that's sponsored by Tri-County Dodge sponsoring that. So that is my report for the Ricketts. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Now, Madam Mayor?
Oh, I'm so ready. Okay. How many things? If you're here in October, I suggest you just park it in the borough for all of October, because we have a lot going on. Sorry, I'm a little behind here. Since last time, if you take a look at Mike Lenhart's report in our packet, he did a very nice job of covering all of our borough events that we had in September. Unfortunately, a lot of people passed away in September, and I had attended a few funerals. I want to thank Chief Markovich for speaking on behalf of the Police Department during Bishop Everett Deppham's service. It was a really moving service. It was so packed, but everyone was masked, and just, it's just a beautiful service, and I'm really not sure how we're going to ever replace our chaplain, but it was very well attended and packed. He was well-loved. Fortunately, also, the great music legend Bobby Newton, Howard and Charles and Charlotte Charles's dad, passed away, and he was memorialized in Reading. And I wanted to thank the Charles family for inviting me into their home and their family to mourn with them. On a lighter note, I presented on my leadership journey with a focus on volunteerism and community service at the Tri-County Chamber Leadership Program. So I wanted to thank Jenna Armato for inviting me to speak to her class. I also had a meeting with the Lenape elders. It was led by Mayor A. Sand and Mayor Genov, College Bill, and Royersford. They're putting together a delegation for the reinternment process of 300 to 400 Lenape people and are looking for land. I am hooking them up with Ron Williams. They were unaware that we had such a nice memorial to their tribe, and they asked that if we could fly all five of the Lenape flags in the borough, they would greatly appreciate it. We'd have to talk to Ron, but we also had Feta Block, which was amazing, so amazing. I think it was the best one that we've had, despite COVID. It was wonderful. So thanks to everyone for putting that on. It was such a beautiful night. We had the pet fair, we had can jam, we had the craft fair at the alley, we had our PCA block captain meetings, and the car show, and our joint school board meeting, which I was pleasantly surprised to hear that the funds for, that the school got, did go to Chromebooks for every student in the school district. Trinita and I also went to a PCA block captain meeting, council women and men. I have put maps, they're in my office for you, on boards. We're going to have you work with PCA, if you don't mind, to start with the Love Your Block program and assigning like block captains. So the police department's working on some areas, and if I could get your help with that, we'd appreciate it. And thank you, Trinita, for taking me, going with me to 400 block of High Street and speaking to the business owners about the amount of trash that is all over where the Blue Moon is. So we are going to work on getting block captains in that area. It's disgraceful, so.
Uh huh.
All right. So you want to hear what's coming up in October?
Yes.
All right. On Saturday, the 9th, from 2:00 to 5:00, is the North End Pool Fall Festival. On October 13th, at Gatsby's Rotary is hosting the B2B Mixer, and it's open to the public. On the 14th, NAACP is having their blood drive at the Ricketts Center from 2:00 to 7:00. The American Red Cross is in desperate need of blood donations. You need to register. We have some people registered, but we need more. If you could call 1-800-RED-CROSS with one S for eligibility questions, and then you can go on the NAACP website to register. Trinita will talk about some other events later. Art Fusion is doing their second annual scavenger hunt again this year. I did it last year with the COVID, you know, safety measures in place, taking photos around the borough at monuments and such, from October 15th to October 24th. So if you go on their website or on Facebook, it's $20, you'll get your scavenger hunt map. And I suggest, considering October 23rd is an all-day borough day, that you get your pictures done before the 23rd. First Presbyterian Church is also having a trunk or treat on the 16th from 4:00 to 5:30. On Sunday, October 17th, Brooke Hay turns 11, so I wanted to wish her a happy birthday, Brooke. The YMCA on the 21st is also having a trick-or-treating and scavenger hunt. On the 23rd is our Halloween parade on High Street from, starting at 12:00 p.m. Due to COVID restrictions, we are not doing the judging of costumes this year, and it's my understanding that we will not be throwing candy from the floats either this year. Out of my hands. And also, on the 23rd, Edgewood Cemetery is having a cleanup from 9:00 to 3:00 with art fair starting at 10:00. We really need volunteers, especially since everything is going on that day. If you can come by for like an hour, that would be great. We need volunteers to help clean up, and if you need, last year, we had the vendors that came. That was really popular. I got a nice cutting board. There was some demonstrations on welding and such, so good for the whole family. Also, on the 23rd is the PAC fundraiser at Coventry Parlor. But if you go to the Rotary Mixer on Wednesday, you can donate there to the fundraiser so that you can save time on the 23rd to get to the other events. On October 24th, I will be uniting Lauren McCloskey and Jay of Gilbertsville in Holy Matrimony, and I will be waiving my customary fee. On 10:30, I will be skipping my birthday entirely this year. Instead, I'm asking everyone to donate $40 to charity of their choice for our Tri-County Amazing Race this month. Also, on the 30th is Hots on High, and Jenny, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe Halloween is still on the 31st, and we will still be trick-or-treating from 6:00 to 8:00. Okay. And save the dates, one more thing. On November 14th is the Hobards Run by the River 5K fundraiser. It also supports the Love Your Black program, which I just talked about, for PCA registrations is at 8:00 a.m., 9:00 a.m. start time, and that is $30. And thank you. That concludes my report.
Thank you.
Okay. Did you see that you didn't get the library report?
No, we missed the second half of it.
Okay. Well, that was the important part.
Okay.
Should I do it now?
I would hope you wouldn't.
Okay, thanks. Because the most important part is the last part, where we need the borough to help out the library. We want to restructure the parking lot in the back so that there's just one entrance and exit off of Union Alley, and Washington Street would be blocked. It's not safe the way it is now for patrons, because so much traffic comes through there that are not stopping, they're not slowing down, they're not parking, they're just using us as a shortcut, and we'd like to try to change that. And Judge Yon, who has just rejoined the board, was amazed that we're still talking about this, because this was a problem years ago, and he remembered discussing it then. So what we'd like the borough to do is lend us some temporary barricades, not just cones, they'll just run those over, I was assured, but actual barricades that we can block off, and put signs up first, though, and we want the borough to tell us, what should the signs say, where should we put them, so that people know ahead of time that the barricade is coming and don't run into it in the middle of the night, and then try that for a while and see how it works. And if it works as we hope, we can just give those barricades back, so it shouldn't cost the borough anything. And then we would buy permanent blockade and put it across Washington Street. And so that's our plan, and we look forward to our joint effort if we can just get this done after all these years. It would really make the library safer for our patrons. So thank you for waiting and letting me come on late.
Thank you. Okay. Now it would be time for our managers' report.
Thank you, and good evening, everyone. Happy to report that we did receive a $3,500 donation from Go4th, which was very much appreciated, and this will cover about 100 new American flags and poles. It will replace some of the existing ones that are getting worn on High Street, and then also install them at new locations on Hanover Street. So I got an order that I approved, I think, yesterday for the majority of them, so we will look to get those in place for the upcoming Memorial Day holiday. So thanks again, Go4th, for that contribution. Just an update on the Pico High Street Underground Electric Work. They are getting to the end of their schedule there in the downtown. The contractor for Pico is telling us that the work from Warren to Manitani will be completed at the end of this week. Warren to Madison will be complete at the end of the month on 28th, and Price to Bailey will be completed on the 15th. It's expected that once they're done with that, full paving of those areas curb-to-curb will start sometime in mid-October. We don't have an exact date for them yet, but we're working with Pico's contractors for the final paving date, and also to try to limit the impacts to the downtown businesses. Also, an update on the Authorities Water Sewer Project, Henry Street should be complete on Friday, and then they'll be moving to Cherry Street to wrap up the last phase of that project. Just an update this week is Fire Prevention Week, so stay updated to Pottstown Fire Department and Emergency Management Facebook page, which is encouraging and engaging in a public awareness campaign this week. So lots of information out there about how to test smoke detectors, what to do if you might be hearing impaired, and how some different options for fire alerts might be helpful for you in those situations. And also, just a reminder that we do have smoke detectors available for people that need them, if you want to contact the fire department. As I mentioned, we did have a good meeting with the council and the school board last week. We presented about 15 or 16 different projects that are going on in the borough right now, and about nine or 10 that we would like to see in the future. So it was a lot of information. That will be up on our website soon, if people want to check it out. We mentioned the Halloween parade and trick-or-treat. Just an update, on Tuesday, we'll be meeting on Tuesday instead of Monday due to the Columbus Day holiday. We'll be providing a presentation of our initial budget for council's consideration, and then we'll also be seeking approvals for the 2020 audited financials. There were no findings found in 2020. We'll provide that to council for review by Friday. That completes my report.
Very good. All right, thank you. Good timing. It is 7:30, and at this time, we need to hold a public hearing on Carlos Liquor License. I'll turn this over to our solicitor, Mr. Gordon.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ween. As you indicated, this is a public hearing on the request of Juan Carlos LLC of 235 East High Street. The applicant has made a request and seeks approval from Borough Council for an economic development liquor license pursuant to Section 461B1 of the State Liquor Code. The purpose of the hearing is to take any public comment with respect to the request of Juan Carlos. I think council is generally familiar with these hearings. We've had them in the past. In this particular case, it's not a question to relocate a liquor license from one municipality to another, but rather, the applicant seeks a special type of liquor license known as an economic development liquor license. The hearing is required under the State Liquor Code. At the conclusion of the hearing, potentially on Tuesday evening, council needs to make a decision through a resolution whether it grants their request or not. The legal standard under the liquor code is really twofold. One is whether the granting of the license would improve economic development, and the second is so long as it does not have an adverse impact on the welfare, health, safety, and morals of the borough. Before we take public comment, I would mark for the record a letter we received dated September 6 that was addressed to Borough Manager Justin Keller. It came from Salvador D. Gambone Real Estate. The letter included information regarding the request for the license. Without any further ado, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address council with respect to this request of Juan Carlos? Records should indicate there was no public comment. As required by the statute, you have 45 days from the date of the receipt of the request, which was September 6. To make a decision, we will prepare a resolution for your consideration for Tuesday evening, unless council has any questions or comments.
It's one of my favorite places in town, and I took my wife for our first date there, and I'd like to extend, regardless of any, every courtesy we can, to hopefully gets it, I guess, or difficult to get as well. So if there's anything we could do to help, that'd be great.
A resolution approving would be the appropriate thing, if that's council's prerogative, and we'll have it ready for Tuesday night. So we'll close the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Ween.
Very good. Thank you. Okay. I'll talk about traffic enforcement agreement with Hanover Square. Mr. Gordon?
Yes. I think everyone's aware that Hanover Square, the community along Industrial Highway and Hanover Street, is essentially, has roads that are private, meaning they're non-dedicated. The police department received a request from the Hanover Square Community Association to allow. to allow the Police Department to enforce traffic regulations on the private roads. Normally, that couldn't occur unless there is an agreement in place with the borough to allow the Police Department to enforce those traffic rules. In speaking with the chief, he's more than willing to move forward with the enforcement of the, on the private roads. But it requires an agreement, which we have received and reviewed. If council is in agreement on Tuesday night, the suggested motion would be to authorize the execution and approval of the Agreement for Traffic Law Enforcement on the private roads within Hanover Square. And the chief or I would be happy to answer any questions you might have. Presuming you wanted to do this, the next step would be make sure that all the signage that, within the community, is properly posted and noticed so the police can enforce the traffic ordinances.
Any questions? All right, we'll list that for Monday evening. Next, we'll discuss the Noise Ordinance Amendment. Again, Mr. Garner?
Thank you, Mr. Weand. Council recalls that probably several months ago, council voiced some concern about the volume of fireworks that were being set off throughout the borough. Recognize that the municipality's hands are somewhat tied due to the preemption of the state law and the fact that the state has allowed these types of fireworks. But speaking with the chief, we've come up with some, what we believe are reasonable regulations for the timing of the use of the fireworks. And we're prepared to move forward with changes to the noise ordinance to attempt to address those. Keep in mind that there is a balance. We can't go overboard as far as the regulations. Certainly, on holidays, and we've identified holidays and a suggested draft change to the noise ordinance, such as New Year's Eve, Labor Day, Fourth of July, Memorial Day, the holidays that you would normally think that might be worth celebrating. We would permit fireworks to occur. Other days, they would be prohibited after 9:00 p.m. So we're attempting to try to put reasonable regulations on. If council's inclined to want to move forward, at some point, we would need a motion to prepare and at least prepare, and then ultimately advertise an ordinance for the regulation. And the chief and I are happy to answer any questions. Again, we're trying to walk a tight rope here to try and help the borough, but at the same time, not overstep our bounds, given the restraints that we have with the state statute.
Good. Any questions? We'll list that for Monday. We'll go forward with that. Next is an appointment of Kevin Owens as Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator.
Yes, we're recommending this appointment. Kevin, you know, he really comes with a deep knowledge of emergency management. He's previously worked for the County Department of Emergency Management. And as the current Police Department Administrator, he's already somewhat filling this role on an ad hoc basis. He really brings a nice skill set that we don't currently have in the borough. And we feel that he would be more than adequate to serve in this capacity. So we'd like to recommend him for Deputy Emergency Management Coordinator.
Okay. No discussion? We'll list that for approval Monday evening? Kevin? 12 is the sale of borough vehicles. There's a change, Mr. Keller.
Yeah, so there was one vehicle that wasn't sold under our previous round. We were able to get that closed out. It's a 2010 Crown Victoria. Recommending disposing to Ralph DeAngelo for $2,300.
Okay. And we'll approve that. 13 is Montgomery County Planning Commission contract. Mr. Keller?
Yes, so this is our contract that we have with Montgomery County Planning Commission. We've had this contract for the past several years, really, as long as I can remember. They are up for renewal, and we are looking at a three-year planning and assistance contract through 2022 and 2024 at a cost of $30,000 per year. So some of the work that they do covers planning commission meetings, regional planning, zoning ordinance, and review matters, master planning, and Act 247 reviews. So we're requesting that that contract be approved for the next three years.
Very good. Okay. List that for Monday. We're at now 15. Hobarts Run Ornamental Lighting Agreement.
So if you recall, several months ago, we had authorized our solicitor to prepare an agreement for the installation of seven ornamental streetlights within a borough right of way on the north side of Beet Street, from approximately the Hill School to Adams Street. And Hobarts Run and the Hill School are installing these lights. And under this agreement, they would be responsible for the maintenance of the light in perpetuity, including bulb replacement, rust, et cetera. The agreement does establish an invoicing process. In the event that the borough would need to spend any time maintaining these lights, we would invoice the Hill School or Hobarts Run to get reimbursement. The Hill School and/or Hobarts Run is required to have an insurance and a release. And that document is currently signed by the Hill and Hobarts Run awaits our approval and signature.
Okay. No issues with that? We'll list that for Monday. 16 is the YWCA street closure on October 17.
Yes, so we've made pretty good progress on this to date. We just did want to note to council that there's a date change on this. It just adds an additional day, so it'll be from October 17 through the 23rd now. And the applicant is here to request a fee waiver for the event. But at this juncture, the design, materials, maintenance agreement, and the event installation and road closures have all been approved by staff and consultants. So I just need to sign the maintenance agreement and get it back to Elise. So is there anything you'd like to say, Elise?
Okay, so council members, mayor, solicitor, and president, thank you for this three-month-long process. I appreciate everybody's time with this. It's been a journey, but I'm glad that we're at this point. So I think that we've met all of the conditions to the conditional approval. And I'm just requesting to see if you would be willing to waive the fee for the permit and closure.
And the fee is?
It is $119... $119.50.
Comments?
What was our agreement on waivers for fees?
So we have a policy that we do not waive any fees except for park and recreation-sponsored events or parades. So that's why the applicant is here tonight requesting a waiver to that policy.
I appreciate her asking, but I feel that we should stick by our policy. It's there for a reason. I agree.
Can I ask a question? Is there a reason, like a hardship reason or something like that, that you're asking for this?
It is not, so it's a soft ask. And if the reply is a no, then that's fine. We're prepared to pay it.
Thank you. I agree with Joe.
Okay. Thank you.
Appreciate it, yeah, for stuff.
Okay, so...
What action do we take now?
Well, there's no action will be required on Tuesday night unless you're inclined to grant the request.
Anyone?
Okay. Thank you.
Next would be the Victory Christian Life Center Light the Night.
Yeah, so they would like to close Washington Street between King and Buttonwood Alley between the hours of 3:00 p.m. and 8:00 p.m. on the 30th for the Light the Night event.
Okay. Any comment? Yes? No? Okay. We'll list that for Monday. 18 is the Halloween Trick or Treat Janet Friedland Street Closure of October 31st.
Yes, so they're requesting closure of Franklin Street between Wilson and Diamond between 3:00 p.m. and 9:00 p.m. for this event.
Okay. And we'll list that for Monday. Horror of 866 East High Street.
All right.
It's that one.
So this one is for a vinyl window sign to advertise the business. I guess there was one member of Harb that wasn't in favor of it, so came to council for their approval.
Okay.
I do believe it's in the packet.
It is.
So if you had a chance to look at it over the weekend, let us know if you have any comments. I mean, at least, we haven't done a zoning review for the sign, but it would, on the surface, it appears that it would meet zoning. You just have to determine whether you're acceptable of the materials in the Harb district.
Okay, we'll list that for, actually, Tuesday. I've been saying Monday. My apology.
Oh, me too.
Okay, and 20 is the administratively approved for 1, 2, 3, these four addresses. We'll put those on. So I guess it's time now for comments from any citizens under present.
So I know that, I think we had missed somebody last month, Charlotte Velosky. If she's here, she could speak first. If you're online, feel free to unmute yourself and speak. Otherwise, the way that we'll do this tonight is that each person that would like to speak should sign up at the front. Per our policy, you have three minutes to speak, and we won't be providing a response to the speakers. So I'll first open it up to anybody online that's virtual that would like to make a comment. Please send me a request in the chat box within the next minute or two. All right, first up, we have John Morton.
Hello, my name is John Morton. I'm a homeowner and a resident of Pottstown. My question is, what plans are in place, in action? Are you, the Borough Council, taken to address those living on the margins or without permanent addresses, homeless, that resides here in our community and borough? Because I see that we're wasting resources just chasing them around from place to place and, you know, see if we can deal, get something going here that we don't have to worry about wasting our resources. Thank you.
Thank you. Tom Nyhars. Am I saying that right, Tom?
No, but I'm used to it by now. It's pronounced Nyhass.
Nyhass. All right, there we go. Thank you.
So Tom Nyhass, 846 East High Street. I'm again going to start with that same question. What plans are in place and action are you taking to address those living on the margins and without a permanent address here in our community and borough? Being boots on the ground, working every day with the folks that these types of decisions affect, I feel I can speak to this a little. Whether directly or indirectly, our borough is citing and arresting these folks, threatening fines to those who give them cover in the rain, attempting to stop individuals and churches from serving food, and blocking viable solutions based on fear and claims of negative economic impact with no data behind it. We will not arrest our way out of homelessness. We will not hospitalize our way out of homelessness. We will not starve our way out of homelessness by stopping the feedings. And try as we might, we cannot shame our people out of homelessness. I'm sure many of you are thinking right now that you haven't done any of these things to anyone. But you have, and so we all have by electing you. This is the reality of our community that so many ignore and act as if it will just go away. You are our community leaders, and I urge you to do what you were elected to do for all of our residents, not just those with an address. Homelessness in Pottstown is at about 0.38% of population, whereas Phoenixville's population is about 0.47%. However, we can all see the differences in appearances and economically. Phoenixville has four shelters in place, whereas we have Salvation Army and Al's Heart during the winter at night only. There are numerous sources to pull data from that show housing the homeless in the community will benefit the community. And if that's too difficult, we need only look towards our neighboring cities that took this risk and are now benefiting from it. I'm not trying to convince you of any specific cause or any plan of action, only to point out that what we're doing and what's going on is not producing beneficial results for anyone involved, and resources are being wasted beyond measure with these efforts. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Ernie Miranda?
Hi, I live at 379 Apple Street. Pretty sure all of you are familiar with that address because the homeless do stay on my porch. I have been threatened that I will be fined if I continue to do so. I'm around the homeless 24 hours a day. They're always around in my house. I give them food, water, shower, electricity when I can. But as far as trash on that block, there's three trashcans on that block. I'm not sure if you knew that. The fourth one that they took away would probably be helpful. Like, if you can't get food from clusters without an ID that costs $35, where do you go? Nobody knows, right? I just don't get it, like... Where's the liberty and justice for the homeless?
Thank you. Joe Wyners? Wyners.
Good evening, members of the committee. My name is Joe Wyners. I am a 20-year resident of the borough of Pottstown and homeowner. I'm here to tell you a little bit about my experience over the last, from December till April of 2020, as a volunteer at Al's Heart Warming Center, which I assume you're all familiar with. I was a volunteer there, that worked there an average of four to five hours per week for a period of about four or five months. I know many of the people that are without homes in Pottstown, the homeless, as they are called. Personally, I've come to know them. And I have seen how the center is able to connect the homeless there with a variety of other services, some of them are based out of the county and otherwise, that the homeless need to be connected with in order to be able to take a step towards more stability in their life. As you probably know, the homeless, not to stigmatize anything or anybody, but big problems with the homeless is either drug addiction or alcohol addiction-related or mental illness. One of the problems that I have come to understand when there is no place for the homeless to gather even at night during the winter is for these agencies to track them down and keep track of these individuals, these brothers and sisters of ours, to really connect them, to gain their trust, and be able to sustain them in a way that they can take a next step to improve their lives, through gainful employment, through medical help, whatever the case is. I had a personal experience with one of the individuals that I would not have met, who was a resident of Pottstown, who became homeless, that I was dropped off by the Police Department at Al's Heart, who, over a period of about four months, was, and I'm not kidding you here, admitted about 24 to 36 times, is my estimate, to the emergency room in Pottstown, who had numerous, probably dozens of interactions with the police, not because of any type of violence, but because of an addiction problem. It is volunteers like myself who were able to connect with him at Al's Heart Warming Center that were able to help some of those individuals. And in this case, I'm happy to report that after, you know, since April or so, we've been able to transition him to a nursing home, and he has been free of his addiction so far.
You have 10 seconds.
So I thank you for listening to that, and I'll finish up like this. I'd like to ask the council, if not council, and the committee, I know I'm not going to get an answer, but specifically the Borough Manager, what is the problem with the process for the variance for a long-term center for Al's Warming Center? I know I'm not getting an answer, but I hope we'll get some... I know I'm not getting an answer, but I hope we'll get some one soon. Thank you.
Thank you. Dennis Hillegas. Okay. LeAnn Moyer.
Hi, my name is LeAnn Moyer. I have a group called LeAnn's Life-Changing Fairy Group. I'm here to, on behalf of the homeless today. What I do is to make less fortunate people have a warm meal in their belly, or a warm blanket, or just an ear to listen to. I have to help with getting them a job, even apartments. My goal is to get as many people off the street as I can. I don't do this for a paycheck. I do this out of the kindness of my heart. I have listened to both sides of the story. I've talked to business owners, and I do, I understand loitering on their property is a problem. I understand. So what we did is, I literally, I went and talked to a lot of the homeless people myself, and a lot of people moved into tents in the park, or not in the park, just, you know, in the woods. And my problem is, is now they're being moved, have nowhere to go, and the number one, I would say the number one problem out there right now is, they can't get IDs because they don't have a permanent address. So, that's, I don't know how to, we tried to help, my group tried to help as far as getting a permanent address, getting, going to the, you know, I tried myself to go and use my address or whatever I could, just to get them IDs, they can't. So they're stuck. There's probably 80% of the people out there right now that can't get IDs and they can't work because of that. So, I'm asking to think about pushing them out of the tents, because you're going to bring them back into town where then you don't have business owners and stuff backing, backing us up on stuff, so. Thank you.
Thank you. Crystal McCoy. No? Christian?
Hi. So, what plans are in place and action are you Borough Council taking to address those living on the margins or without permanent address, homeless that reside here in our community and borough? So, stuck in a situation, led me into a homeless situation, Al's Heart Warming, Al's Heart Warming, Al's Heart Warming, Warming Center, sorry about that. Our, Al's Heart Warming Center closed down at the end of April, and then I was stuck in the Walmart parking lot for about three months, and then I get arrested for trespassing because I wasn't allowed back on property from something over a year ago for accused retail theft. Well, wouldn't I just be arrested for retail theft? It shouldn't take over a year when six police officers from the same PD, Pottstown PD, knew me. They physically knew I was there, I told them why, and I told them that Walmart knew that I was there. So if Walmart knew that I was there, I don't know why I'm getting a trespassing charge three months after, and it's because of a homeless situation. And I've also noticed the same thing with Ali's. Someone was sleeping outside, I was sleeping outside there, and then all of a sudden, police are explaining this and that after the fact. It's one thing that they don't want you there because it's private property, it is private property, and it is considered as soliciting, while at the same time, if the police already know that you're there and as to why, and you're not living there, you're in a temporary transition, and there's no homeless shelter involved, and the people understand what's going on with any type of transitionings from addresses, then I don't know why they wouldn't have said something right then and there, and then why are they saying something after the fact? That's just my problem. It's like, I don't have a problem not being on a property or not listening, because on a legal standpoint, it is considered trespassing. Then why wouldn't you say something then? It reflects credibility. You lose credibility, and we can't have that in the police department. Thank you.
Thank you. The next one, I cannot read the name, but it's phone number ending in 1082. Anyone? Okay. Jennifer Green, please.
Do you already start my timer before I get up here?
I cleared it.
All right. Jennifer Green, I just wanted to say a couple of things. First, again, coming in hot with Coates Department, I was here a week and a half ago complaining about grass that is now up to my hips. It's in my neighbor's yard. It is causing a major bug issue between the mosquitoes and the fleas and the ticks. I have asked him to cut his grass, he's like never home. If I don't cut it, it doesn't get cut. I shouldn't have to do that as a single parent, already managing my lawn, my neighbor's lawn, and his front lawn. So if I was told that Coates would be out the next day, they still haven't come out, no big deal, whatever. To address, or I do want to say, I want to give a shout out, kudos to, geez, now I'm forgetting how officers and, oh gosh, it's so terrible, to the Pottstown Police Department for the elusive North End Fox that is running all over the place. He is covered in mange, he is sick. Spoke to a couple of wildlife people, and he's mainly in the fourth. He's mainly on the other side of Charlotte. But they said that they wouldn't take him if they did find it, but they would treat it with ivermectin. It would stop the mange. Once the mange is gone, he will go back to hunting at night and not hunting during the day. So there's a couple of like advocate groups that are out there trying to find it, bait it, get it better, so it can go back into the woods where it came from, because it's been running around probably about four or five weeks now. So that's, that's that. The other thing with the, with the homeless situation, I am absolutely so empathetic to this, I agree. They need addresses. If you don't have an ID, you cannot get a job. If you don't have an ID, you cannot get a bank account. If you don't have a bank account and you don't have a job, you have nothing and you're back at square one. If we can get some kind of place, maybe some of these blighted properties that are in town, that are just sitting dormant, if we can have, you know, just somebody purchase them, somebody run them, somebody use those properties for something good, so these people have a place to live, that they are being cared for, that they know that they have a place to put their head at the end of the day, that they can get a shower when need be. I know there are tons of advocates in Pottstown that also do work with Norristown, Phoenixville, and Philadelphia, that also worked in partners with Al's Heart as well, that feed, clothe, provide tents and stuff for our homeless people. They are people. We have to understand that. They are people. And in this economy, many of us saw, we were one paycheck away from being homeless. When people were losing jobs or being denied from unemployment and stuff like that, that is incredibly a scary situation, especially for a single parent like myself. So, I am all for you guys. You know, what you need, I will fight for you, I will, I will speak for you, I will help you. We need to do this as a town. We need to do this as a Borough Council. We have to. That is our duty. That is our duty. They are our citizens. They are part of us. They are a part of our town. So please find it within yourself to come up with some kind of solution. Thank you.
Thank you. Rita Pias, please.
Good evening, Mayor, councils, and everybody, and people. My name is Rita Pias. I lived in Pottstown, Kindness Street, for many, many years. I do volunteer work for the homeless. I give lunch on Mondays for Christ Episcopal, and I really support the homeless, and I would like to know what you people are going to do about the homeless. They need solutions, and I want to put, put in your, in the feed of them. When it's cold, everybody's home doing heater, house, and everything, and sometimes they don't have nothing. They don't have nothing to eat. And it really, they are, remember, they are human beings like everybody else. That's why I support a stance and to, please, give a solution to this problem. Thank you.
Thank you. Cameron Brewer, please. No? Dennis Kelly, please.
Hi, Dennis Kelly. I am one of the homeless people, and I've been told that by Friday I'm supposed to exit the property and or be arrested for trespassing. So, at this point, I, you know, I guess I have questions, you know, like you said, legal questions in regards to, you know, you know, not being served papers, you know, properly. Everyone on the property has not been physically told, so therefore, if I'm, you know, was one of those people that was told, I leave because I was told things to face, and now those others are going to be staying. And now, how are they going to be arrested? Because they were never physically told, they have to be, you know, have to remove themselves from some of the property. You can call it squatting, you can call it, you know, homeless. I mean, we didn't ask for COVID, it came here, I became homeless because of COVID. You know, I was living in a boudoir at the time, and I actually was raised and brought up in this town. For 50 years I've been, lived here. So, I mean, if it's not my town, whose town would be 50 years of living here? So, and there's, you know, grateful for the church that's downtown, that gives us, you know, the refrigerator, you know, and there was, you know, there were some prosperous jobs out here, but I recently come into a knee injury, so I'm kind of a standstill myself as far as getting gainful employment. I can't go, you know, physical and pass, so I'm in a rock and hard place right now. I mean, I can survive with a tent, but I don't know what else, you know, by being removed from a certain property that's out there. I mean, I could go, I don't know if I could go to a borough property and if they would not kick me out, I don't know. So, I mean, I'm grateful for all the people that spoke, you know, to maybe make a change for this. I don't know if it's going to be quick enough for the, you know, 15, 20 people that are out there that, you know, are staying in the location they're at. I know you guys probably can't give any legal advice at the moment, you know, but I don't know, if, you know, we took a stand, like tent city down in the city, in the city of Philadelphia, you know, if you guys are going to come in and arrest everybody, I don't even know if it's possible. I, I don't have, you know, lawyer's knowledge, I don't know if we need to get a great one or what the case is there, but if we don't stay there, we're going to be held to someone else's doorstep. That's all I can tell you. I mean, inevitably, we're going to have to sleep somewhere, we're going to fall asleep somewhere. We can't stand to be awake forever and just waiting for somebody to come out there or a job or whatever. So, I don't know, I mean, I was told, I didn't read a paper, but I was told.
That's your time, sir.
Or it was a story in the paper two days ago, in regards to the location.
Sir, that's your time.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you. Let me just double check here. All right, that concludes citizen comment.
Okay, then, let, let us hear from the councillors. Councilor Kirkland, any comments?
The discussion with the alcohol license, any kind quickly, I did have a couple of questions, but maybe I could bring those up on Tuesday. But, no, other than that, I really don't have any questions. I guess I'll bring my questions up on Tuesday concerning the alcohol license.
Okay. Councilor Prochel, while I can still see you.
Yeah, well, sorry I couldn't be there. My son number two had a classmate different for COVID, so I figured to be, probably stay at home, but he is negative, so I will be there on Tuesday.
All right. Understood.
Yeah, just to, even though the Dash property didn't work out the way that some of the folks want to, that doesn't necessarily mean that it won't be open, obviously, in the future. I guess that's just the easiest way to say it right now.
Okay.
That's it.
Thank you. Councilor Lindsay.
Okay. Oops, sorry. I turned this off. Mick, I have a question for you. They are still driving up Oak Street the wrong way. They still going up that. I seen it twice myself. I beeped the horn and say, hey, you're going down the wrong way. So I don't know what to do, like, I don't know.
We could try to have somebody sit there or.
Yeah, I mean, you get some money. Okay. Probably have somebody sit up there, probably on Spruce. Because they come up there and they go down Spruce. I mean, whatever you can do. Thank you. Okay. I'm like, why can't I sit? Because I ain't got my glasses on. That's what happens when you get up there in age, yeah. Okay. On October 23rd, from 11 to 3:00 PM, 300 block of King Street in Pottstown, this Week Without Violence Block event. Okay. So from October the 17th through October 23rd, the YWCA is going to have the street mural installation. And Art Fusion needs volunteers and painters. You don't have to know how to paint, as long as you can color in between the lines, I'm sure. They need painters from nine to 12 and from two to five. Again, no experience needed. Today, I went to the middle school and I seen my mentor. I haven't seen her in, since 2019 because the school closed, I was in school, and it was so good to see her. She is tall as me, so when I last seen her, she was here, and now she's here. It's amazing how much they grow. And I seen some of my walking school bus kids from Rupert Elementary School, so they were in elementary, now they in high school. And I'm, and they wear masks, and I'm all in their face, like, is that who I think it is? And sure enough, it was them. And I just want to let you know that, that the middle school is doing the protocols for COVID. They are, the kids are sitting, well, they try to, sits, sit one stool apart, and they also have the tables for lunch in the middle of the, in the hallway. So I was there doing three lunch periods, and they also have the van, and after they leave, we wipe the tables down and the chairs down, and they sweep them up. It's quick too, because they got it rolling, so they had me hustling today. But, shout out to the principal, they are doing what they need to do, and they doing different upgrades to, you know, try to have the kids more accountable for the tables and stuff and the mess, but that's all I got.
Very good. Councilor Lewandowski? Comment? None. Officer Bailey?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing. Mayor Henry, comment?
I just want to thank everyone who spoke on behalf of Al's Warming Center, and I'd like to say that personally, I'm in favor of the Warming Center. I've had personal experience in periods of my life of homelessness as a child and as an adult, and it sucks. And I think what Al's Warming Center is doing for the community and the people in our community is outstanding. People don't move here to find a homeless shelter. You live here, you get evicted, you lose your job, you lose your house, this is your home, you stay here, you're homeless here. You don't travel somewhere else to find a shelter. So, I am grateful for people in my life who took me in and took me off the streets, and I just ask council to keep that in mind.
Thank you. I just want to conclude tonight that we have not given up on the homeless, not we council, not we Borough Hall, not the staff. We will continue looking for some solutions that benefit all. And I do have to make an announcement that we will have an executive session, we'll be discussing collective bargaining, no action will be taken, and we will not be coming back. So, meeting adjourned.